We're recording.
Good.
All right, back in session. We're on page number twenty-six. Page number twenty-seven. Page number twenty-eight.
Oh wait, twenty-seven, sorry.
Okay.
Um, "Street sidewalks and curbs" is one line item and then "street construction" is another. Are those two interchangeable because on one of them, there has never been any expense on it? Um, either from, since two thousand sixteen? And on the "street sidewalks and curbs," that one has increased, obviously, by a lot, a lot. But anyway, now there's a total of four hundred thousand dollars in there, whereas in the past, it was between the two of them combined, at the max, any given time, three hundred and sixty-four thousand. So, I know that we're doing "street construction," but, I mean, is there a list? Is there, is this a number just thrown in there, just in case we have any construction? Or why did we add another "street construction" line item when it already existed? And now we've got two line items and both of them have money in it.
Ronnie and Robert have been working on a priority schedule of projects that need to be taken care of. That's why that's the way it is.
I mean, is that realistic, that that money will be spent?
I would think in the budget year, it would not all be spent. Because it, just because of the nature of the beast, it takes us a while to get bids and everything else. So, I don't think that it would all get spent in one budget year.
And...
Wasn't the, the job on Central, wasn't that a grant job?
That was a grant.
I believe that was a DOT grant, yeah.
So, these would be city streets and stuff? I mean, I don't know which ones need construction. Are we building any new ones? I mean, is there a list of what these streets are going to be?
That's what they're working on. They've been working on the priority list.
Okay, so we don't have a list, okay.
There was a list, there was a list, because, um, on, uh, Cornell, Cornell, from that apartment complex down, that was supposed to have been a new sidewalk.
I don't think we, this is not coming from general fund. So, and we don't have any issues with funding in, in this fund.
Yeah, but still, I mean, if not used, because we get...
Right, but if it's not going to be used, then it's just going to be added to...
I think this is general fund.
This is general fund? Streets? No.
Street department?
I'm sorry.
One-ten?
This is infrastructure fund.
Right.
Okay.
So, there's really no harm in leaving it there. If it rolls over, it rolls over.
In fact, the rest of your budget then is probably the same way.
Right. Twenty-eight? Twenty-nine?
Uh, do...
What about, uh...
On the improvements, I'm sorry, on parks, the MLK improvements, total capital costs?
Mm-hmm.
There was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in a proposed increment.
Mm-hmm.
What are those?
That was my question.
That was the, wasn't all the playground equipment for that?
They demoed that, they're not replacing it.
Yeah, that got moved to, um...
Is it the, um, does it have anything to do with the Boys and Girls Club building?
They got an insurance payment.
But I'm asking...
Do you know what that is?
Budgeted that way.
This wouldn't be in, it wouldn't be in as an insurance payment in there as, in for a money, would it?
It's for the, um... Looking at that, that looks, uh, very familiar to the amount of money that we receive from the county for recreation.
For what?
ARPAK.
ARPAK.
Oh, it's AR, ARPAK?
So, this is our match for ARPAK?
Okay. Can you please find out exactly what that is and have it for us at our next meeting?
Yes.
Anything else on page twenty-eight?
Nope.
Page twenty-nine?
I just want to know about the eight hundred thousand, where do we get that from?
CDPG.
We just, uh, we just signed the papers to release the funds today, I did, um, so...
That's going to be reimbursable?
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent, yeah.
So, why do we, why is it in the budget, just for...
Because it has to be spent.
Okay, thank you.
Page thirty?
No.
Page thirty-one?
That's for me.
Well, these are the CRA, and I don't know, has the CRA has been, had an opportunity to look at this? I mean, I know they sat in the meeting the last time, but they really wanted to kind of look at their stuff. I guess they can do adjustments later, but I really didn't want a rubber stamp there.
When was their last meeting?
Their last meeting?
Hurricane.
Yeah, well, it was postponed because of that, so it's actually next Tuesday night.
Okay, that'll be their opportunity. Anything they want to bring back, obviously, we'll still have one more meeting to, uh, discuss that. So, was there anything else on page thirty-one?
On the Ma- Main Street, we're not going to do anything then with the reimbursement of the brickle building of any kind? Or there's not going to be any discussion to that, how, what we're going to do with the brickle? How, how that affects the, uh...
From a budgeting standpoint?
And along that same line, it may be unrealistic to, uh, have zero legal fees for Main Street on that. Give, because it does relate to some of that stuff.
Yeah. Feeling ambitious there, Jerry?
No, I'm... You want me to be specific when I, when I do work for the CRAs and so...
I understand.
But, I mean, couldn't you fall also under other contractual service?
You could.
Other than just plain illegal fees?
Okay. I, I just saw zero in there.
Yeah.
I know I do work for CRA, Main Street.
Ricky, can you put a dollar in there, please?
Oh, that's way too much for me.
Ninety-nine cents, please, I mean, anyway, let's not get hasty.
I like ten dollars.
Uh, page thirty-two?
What's that, uh, transfer to the airport fund, um...
On thirty-two, or...
Yeah, thirty-two. I mean, the airport CRA. Is that the airport CRA?
Transfer to airport fund.
Uh, that was that, wasn't that that big massive nasty cleanup that they did?
Oh, I don't know, I, I can't remember.
Is that an annual recurring cost, Ricky, the twelve thousand five hundred eighty-one?
Nor- normally, there is a transfer from the CRA to the airport fund.
And that's for some debt that they're paying off?
This is coming from the CRA, yes.
It says, "Transfer to the CRA."
Where does it say to CRA?
Transfer to airport fund. It's CRA Airport to Transfer Airport Fund.
I'm sorry, you're right, it's "Transfer to the airport fund."
Right.
And this is the CRA account?
Correct.
You can see in previous years, it's been significantly more than that.
There was a cleanup done there a while ago, and I think that it ended up being the airport that paid it. Is that what that is? Is that transferred to that? I don't know, I don't remember.
I don't know the answer, but I will look it up and send it out.
That's why we need the airport manager.
Page thirty-three?
I have a question, um, what is that, executive salaries of one seventy-one?
That's a multitude of salaries.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's quite an increase. Do we, did we add people, or...
Where are you, um...
On page thirty-three, at the very top.
Second from the bottom. I mean, second from the top.
Last year was one eighteen, actual, and now we're going to one seventy-one.
Right, the budgeted was one forty-five, um, and then ended up being one eighteen.
Right.
The year before, the actual was one forty-five, so they just simply carried that over, so...
Well, we're not done with the year yet, so it'd be one eighteen.
You're right, you're right. So, it probably would wind up being one forty-five. So, basically, there was an increase there of, uh, you know, what's that, twenty-five thousand?
Well, we had one position, position that was in that department that was out for a while.
Uh-huh.
When Marnita transferred out, and then we hired another girl in there, and then she left. And then we got the other one in there now, that's Karen, that's in there full-time now. So, there was probably a couple of months there that might have skewed that particular number down some.
Okay.
What did she actually do?
That's the senior billing clerk.
At the airport?
No, downstairs at City Hall.
Oh, way off, okay.
Why doesn't it sit at the window?
Okay.
No, this one actually sits in the back.
In the back, okay.
That's where Marnita used to sit, right?
Right.
Okay, I got you now, all right.
Anything else on page thirty-three?
No.
Page thirty-four?
What was, just curious, I'm sorry, on page thirty-three, the fifty-four thousand dollar reduction in other contractual service under accounting and auditing, you withdrew a fifty-four thousand dollar amount there, or cut it out? Is that on our list? I didn't see that one.
Mm-hmm.
That's under contractual services.
Because, I mean, it was fifty-two and then fifty-eight. Anyway, you had a base of one oh four. Wa- was that something special? And then cut it out? Because it was one hundred and four, no, adopted budget was one oh four in eighteen nineteen, but the actual was sixteen nine twelve.
Yeah, it looks like they were planning on using a bunch of money for something and never did in the eighteen year.
Okay, and then it, they were going to plan it again, and then they took it out again?
Right. Probably realized what it had been the years passed and just took it down.
Okay, I just wonder what it is. What are the contractual services in there?
We're paying...
For that department?
Yeah.
Part of that is for your, um, um, accounting software that, uh, does the utility billing. As I mentioned, that, uh, we are paying a total of almost fifty-seven thousand dollars a year for that accounting and finance software.
Okay.
Do, oh, do they, count, do...
What?
For software.
For software. Wow. That's the Navoline software that is thirty-four years old.
And we're paying how much, a year?
Almost fifty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Well, if you kept some of that money, you might be able to afford to get radio read meters and, and read them, read them from the office.
Well, that's not just for the utility billing, that's total...
The entire Navoline system over the whole city?
Yeah, with Navoline system, which part of that, uh, is the, um, reports that your code enforcement, uh, department does.
Uniforms, four thousand...
Uh, as well as, um, all of the, uh, finance department, all of the departments that do the requisitions for them to be approved and for purchase orders to be done, come through the Navoline system. But that bill is appropriated out between multiple cost centers. Uh, there's... There's eleven different cost centers that that bill is portioned out to.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
I have a corny question. I know that I see uniforms in there, again, there's an increment of a thousand, and and that comes out to a thousand dollars per person for uniforms in that department every year. Is that what I'm looking at? Do we buy the entire outfit or just a shirt? I'm just curious. I mean, are they, are they wanting uniforms, or are we just providing them?
We've been providing the polo shirts for them.
Four thousand dollars worth of polo shirts?
Well, part of, part of your department here are your meter readers that go out to read the meters.
Those, yeah, they have the rental shirts.
Yeah. But we're going away from the rental shirts to where we're actually purchasing them.
Oh, that's the dudes, okay.
I, I see six hundred dollars under uniforms.
Yeah, I just realized it's six hundred. I, I was looking at operating supplies. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Anything else on thirty-three? Thirty-four?
So, on the sewer plant, you've got your three people in here, and then the fourth person is, is that, are they going to be under this? Or are they going to be under the waste, are they under the water plant? Of the, um, chart, we had plant operators, we know that there's three certified, and they're getting ready to hire the fourth certified. Where do they fall? Are they in sewer, or are they in water? Because I didn't see them here. Unless they're in the base. Because the regular salaries and wages on base, it went up one hundred and forty thousand or so dollars.
That's where they're at, then.
So, the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, anyway, there's like a hundred and fifty thousand more in regular salaries and wages. That's the four water guys? I mean, the, the two and two certified Class C people?
With Ronnie not being here, I can't answer that accurately, so I can find an answer for you when he gets back next week.
Okay, so that's page thirty-four.
Anything else on thirty-four?
No, I just wondered what that increment was, that's why.
Page thirty-five?
Stanley? That's your page.
Huh?
Thirty-five.
Decepted processing facility. Is that, that's the new, oh, yeah, he's, he's not even, I'm looking at...
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not building a new plant.
Yeah.
No, but it does have in here the million eight for the construction on sewage treatment plant. It's, has that been removed from this right here? It's not.
That's in the CIP, correct?
Right, so, this was the one that we talked about for forty-five minutes the other day, right? And it was because originally, it was tabbed for five hundred and thirty-five, and what changed was the addition of a one point eight million dollar construction on sewage treatment plant. So, my question is this, that's so much money, that are we sure that's the amount? I mean, have the specs been done? Has it been put out to bid? Because is there going to be any guarantee, you know, from our perspective, that that's what it's going to cost? Does any money left over, what happens to that, but...
Any money left over always goes back to...
Oh, I know that, but I mean, you know, I'm just wondering if that, I, 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 I'm just using his gauge on, he's saying it's one point eight million. I'm guessing that he has some estimates and stuff that he put together for all of that?
He has.
Okay.
And hopefully, it would be grant funded instead of...
Yeah, but we don't know that, so we have to put the money in there just in case, right?
Right, just telling you.
So, okay.
Hopefully, it all goes back into contingency after.
And that's the one that had all the machinery and equipment that was altered at the last meeting? So, they're still in there, the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is still in there, and we decided to do the crane at forty instead of one fifty, and there were some other changes that were done on that?
Right.
And...
Those changes have been made.
There was discussion on them, but it was never voted on to take it out of the budget.
Okay, well, we're, we got to do that now, then.
Okay, so the train, the train, the crane truck, we were going to do forty thousand, just in case there's a problem. They can do a down payment on something or whatever, but take that one fifty out and put forty in. And I remember that Stanley had some changes that he had made to it. That seemed to be agreeable.
The, uh, the one twenty-five became thirty K for the tractor. And then the, uh, the twenty-five K for the trailer, uh, stayed. The thirty thousand for the bat wing mower, that also came out.
As, to zero?
To zero.
Yes.
And the, uh, like you said, the crane, and then for the utility truck for line maintenance, that stayed.
Okay.
Both, both of those came out?
Yeah, the twenty-five, no, no, the twenty-five and the fifty stayed. What came out was the thirty.
The thirty came out, the one twenty-five for the, for the tractor went down to thirty.
And the utility truck went from one fifty to forty?
Yeah, okay, that's what I missed.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, let me also mention here that on the, some of the equipment, the equipment for the mowing, the tractor and the bat wing mower, and, uh, some other miscellaneous equipment uh, to do trimming around the things that have to be trimmed around, like the lights and other things out there at the airport. Danielle has gotten a commitment, uh, that they will fund that through, fund a portion of that through grants. There would be, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, that would be available. It would be in an eighty-twenty grant.
For what was this again? For what equipment?
For the mowing equipment.
Tractor, the bat wing.
Okay, okay.
The mowing, bat wing.
Bat wing mower, um, and some other smaller equipment.
Okay.
But it would not be available for, um, nineteen-twenty fiscal year. It would be available for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year.
Okay.
And she said that there is a possibility that it wouldn't just be an eighty-twenty grant, that they would be able to fund all of it.
Cool, good.
So, as far as the mowing equipment, you know, that, if we can hold off for a year on that, we do have a commitment that they will add it into their work plan for the grants for the airport.
Awesome.
So, you're saying take out the thirty thousand that's in there for tractor for mowing?
And take out the tractor for mowing and the bat wing mower.
Okay. Just drop that a hundred, none of the thirty.
Okay, anything else on thirty-five?
That helps a lot. No.
Thirty-six?
Other contractual services, a hundred and eighty thousand added to that. About two-thirds of the way down, under proposed increment.
You got anything, Ricky?
I'm sorry, which...
On, uh, page thirty-six, two-thirds of the way down, other contractual services, you've got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars being added there.
That's what Ronnie had requested to be added in for contractual services. And if you look back at the number of projects that are going on...
Right.
These would be the spec people for the new septic?
There may very well be some things that come up that he needs to have additional contractual services on.
Right.
I mean, you're talking about multi-million dollar projects.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else on thirty-six? Thirty-seven?
So, let me ask you just quickly, on the professional services and contractual services, are those interchangeable?
Could be.
Professional services are, um, more in the line of engineering, um...
Legal.
Legal, those types of services.
Because that went up twenty...
Contractual, contractual would be, you know, anything else that doesn't fall under the professional services category.
Okay. Does that satisfy your question?
Well, not, no, I mean, that still falls under contractual services as well, does it not?
Why don't you see if you can get us a breakdown of everything that's in there?
Well, what I'm saying is, do you really need the twenty thousand dollar increment when you added a hundred and ten thousand to the other contractual services? I mean, other contractual could still also be professional.
Well, like I say, just get a complete list of everything, and then we can make that distinction in the next one.
That's...
Because Ronnie's going to have to answer the question, because he's the ones that put, that put it in there. Anything else on thirty-six? Thirty-seven?
A couple of big chunks there, but I guess we need Ronnie here for that.
There was a question that came up at the last, uh, budget workshop about the number of meters that we had in stock. Um, we have four hundred and seventy-four residential meters in stock. We have about twenty, uh, and the residential ones are the three-quarter inch meters. The one-inch meters for, uh, larger residential and, um, semi-commercial, we have about twenty, twenty-five of those in stock. And the three-inch ones, we have like four in stock.
Okay.
I wa- I was told today that we have nine hundred meters at our residence throughout Avon Park that are not working.
That wouldn't surprise me, because we do an awful lot of re-reads, because we just haven't had the time to get out there and replace the meters that are, that are bad.
Nine hundred meters.
Well, we only have ten thousand residents.
Huh?
Only ten thousand.
It's less than ten percent, it's less than ten percent. But isn't this part of that program where we're supposed to be changing a hundred thousand dollars worth a year? For the next five years? Is that part of what that is?
I think so.
Originally, it was one point two million, and we knocked it down to five hundred thousand.
Okay, so if you have those in stock, how long will it take for those to get installed? Who knows?
All year.
Yeah, it'll take a while. It takes about four to five hours just to do one.
So, if you have enough stock for a full year, pretty much, do you need to put this in the budget for next year?
The manpower?
The meters, because the meters are in here too, somewhere. Didn't I see meters?
Yeah, right here. It's about a third of the way down, just above that line. Originally, it was one point two, knocked out seven hundred thousand, wind up with five hundred thousand there.
I'm not seeing that one.
Yeah.
Right here, on page thirty-seven?
Oh, okay.
At the top.
Alrighty.
You got it?
Okay, wrong page.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Makes sense now. Yeah, I, I just don't know when they purchase those. I don't know if that's something that you have to purchase.
Do they go bad? I mean, don't they have radios? Do radios come with them? I mean, don't they go bad?
It's a, it's a transmitter chip type thing.
Yeah.
Are those are from Avanti?
I'm not sure where they got them.
Again, ask Ronnie that detailed question, let him put something together for us.
Ronnie's going to be busy the next meeting.
He doesn't have that many. We only have like five questions for him.
Yeah.
So far.
Anything else on page thirty-seven?
No.
Okay, so you got, just remember, the water line extension is in here, but there's a potential that we might get that grant after all, so that seven hundred thousand might go away?
Right.
And when are we going to know that?
Any day.
Any day, any day. Okay, because there was also another seven hundred dollars put in water sewer multi-year main transmission as an increment. So...
Let me, let me just correct something. The seven hundred thousand dollars won't go away because it's grant funded? You'll just have an offsetting revenue for it from the grant.
Okay.
You still have to record it as an expenditure.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then, the way accounting rules work, uh, if that is classified as a capital expenditure at the end of the year, it ends up getting reversed out, but that's just confusing the whole issue, so...
Okay.
And then on the equipment replacements, they're talking about doing a hydraulic excavator and additional equipment for five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. What was that additional equipment?
It's a Ronnie question.
It's on page thirty-seven.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
I just want to jump back really quick before we go to the next page. When we were talking about the wastewater treatment plant, Ricky, we were talking about this outside on the, um, porch out there. Um, Ronnie had said that there was going to be six hundred thousand dollars that was going to be rolling over for the septic process facility. And he said that was from this current year. Is that part of the two point three million that we have tabbed for that septic process facility? Can you roll over six hundred thousand dollars? Because he said we've, I don't know, have we already started getting stuff?
If, if there's a purchase order that's issued on it, can it be rolled over? Yes. If not, it has to be re-appropriated in the new budget.
Can you ask him that? Because he didn't say anything about a, a, a purchase order. I don't remember him saying that. But then he bolted, so I don't know if he, you know, wasn't able to finish the conversation. But page thirty-five, when it came to account sixty-three fifty-five, um, it's in there at two point three million. He said six hundred thousand was, was part of that, of rollover money. I didn't know that you could roll over, like you said, unless it's PO, but...
Yeah, he had a family emergency that...
Yeah. So, on the, I'm just, I don't know if I'm looking at this funny or not, but you guys, I'm going to say you guys, seven, thirty-seven, account number fifty-two fifty-one, where it had a decrease of seven hundred thousand dollars in water meters. And then right below that, we had a water sewer multi-year main transmission for seven hundred thousand dollars increment. Did that just swap out?
That's on page...
Page thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Um, account fifty-two fifty-one had a decrease of seven hundred thousand, and then account, uh, sixty-three hundred, I'm sorry. Yeah, sixty-three had an increase of seven hundred. Or is that a totally different thing?
It's a totally, it's a totally different thing.
It looks brand new, because there's nothing prior to that. There's no previous year actuels or anything, so it just looked brand new to me. That whole account, well, it just seems that way. All of that entire section improvements to other buildings.
Goes back to the proper classification of expenditure, that's why that appears, there's no history there. It was in other accounts previous to that, but that type of improvement is considered an improvement other than a building, and it is a capital improvement, so...
But that goes back to the additional equipment on page thirty-seven that we were asking, or at least I said, that for the five hundred and twenty thousand, that is what appears to be, no, it's not, it's not part of that seven hundred thousand. Anyway, that seven hundred thousand, what is that?
I got a good one.
I mean, I can read water line extension, but, you know...
Well, since Stanley has to...
Sewer, sewer multi-year main transmission, that's your main transmission lines.
Okay. Since Stanley has to, uh, leave for a medical issue, um, what do you say, we postpone these last five pages for our next meeting? And any questions any council member has, we can just simply send them to the city manager's office to hopefully be answered by the time our next meeting takes place. We have two issues that we could go ahead and take care of really quick. One is the three percent raise, if anyone's wishing to make a motion on that. Discussion was that would be a three percent one-time raise, not to be rolled over every year. Is anyone wishing to do that? It, it accounts to roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
Now, would that, would that include all the staff?
It's, it's all staff.
Union and ununions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I move that we, uh, provide a one-time, um, three percent raise for the, um, staff for this fis- fiscal years nineteen-twenty.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous?
Okay, the other thing was a code enforcement officer. There was discussion if we wanted to add an extra officer or not.
Well, it all depends on what this numbers, and we're not, we still have, well, those are revenues, I'm sorry, expenditures. I know you want to bring that up, but I had a question for Ricky. The airport water plant is on airport property. Why can't the airport derive revenue from that well?
It can.
You can't?
It can, yes.
So, that could put the airport in the black?
It's a possibility, but then again, you're adding an expenditure to the water and sewer fund at that point.
But isn't that our richest account?
Are you talking about for rental, for renting the property, or...
Um, either they lease the property, or they pay for the water, you know, something. Because right now, the airport pays water bills, but yet they're giving it away to the water department to sell. It's on airport property.
Mm-hmm.
If that's a source of revenue, it could help alleviate some of the redness of the airport fund.
It could help pay for the airport manager. I think it would complicate things if you had the airport own the well. I think that if you're going to do anything, at least the property because of the permitting with Swift Mud and so on.
Well, what would we lease that for? Could you, I mean, would that be per square foot based off of the average going rate? I mean, it's something is better than nothing.
I would, I would propose that the staff come up with some suggestions.
With a revenue, okay, if possible.
I'll get with you on that, Jerry.
Okay.
See what we can figure out.
So is there any movement on the code enforcement officer tonight?
I would like for that to be included. This has been one of the biggest deals that I deal with on a phone call on an average basis. So I would like to see if we can do that.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we include code enforcement officer with, into the budget.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the budget analyst?
The budget analyst?
Financial analyst.
Financial analyst. Are you making, I believe, no, that's already been, that's already been added. It was for fifty-two thousand some odd dollars plus fifteen hundred.
I didn't know that we had, I mean, we had a bunch of things that we were talking about.
It was a affirmation of the board.
Okay, all right. Okey-dokey.
So it's going to be on next, not this coming Monday, but next Monday's meeting, so... My only question is, um, if there's, you know, the one thing that we're trying to do tonight is to come up with anything that's going to stop us from approving a budget, because the next one is, is the big one. It needs to be done. So anything that you need to come up with that needs to be changed, it needs to happen now or in between now and then. I mean, we can always have another special meeting, but we prefer not to.
I think we're close.
Yeah, so in the meantime, since we have this crazy marked up thing, now that we know who we have, um, and there's other positions in here that will be added in, could we get a new, um, what do you call it?
Organization chart.
Organizational chart, and then put in some pretty odd color that doesn't match anything else, all the new positions that we've talked about? That way, you know, we see where they fit.
Well, and I'll also get you the total number of employees under each line as well.
Okay.
I should be able to have that for you.
Very good. Is there anything else?
And while I got the open microphone, I want to thank you all for, uh, what you did on the fire assessment. Uh, that was huge. Um, appreciate that very much. David, could you send me a copy of that, um, um, chart when you get, get it sent to them?
It'll be next week, but yes, I will.
Yep. Thank you, council, for all of your time. Thank you, administration, for all of your time.
I was just going to say, I'd like to say thank you, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.